Please calling our meeting to order. If you would all stand and join in your pledge. Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. So, uh, recognitions?
Yes.
Yes, if you would.
All right, so we start this evening with a few recognitions. We had a couple students that couldn't make it tonight, the scholar athletes, due to some sporting events, CCC tournament in lacrosse. But we'll start with the Cabe Leadership Award, and we have Emily Carroll here. And Steve is going to talk a little bit about Emily. Familiar face. Is she here? She is.
Yes, a very familiar.
Yes.
I hope she survived the brutal interview. So Emily is truly an outstanding leader in our school. As you know, her renown is in the music field with Marcus Graham. Has her own band, which travels, her own middle group, which she travels around, but also does so much more for our school in terms of helping out on the writing center, among other things. She is a true pleasure every time you talk to her. And as you have seen in action here, she has a great way about her of understanding situations, of understanding people, and being able to move things forward. So I can't think of a better person that matches up better for this award. So the Cabe Award for Emily Carroll, thank you.
Thank you so much. We're doing fabulous, wow. You were fabulous, and we wish you all the best.
Hang on, we need a photo.
Me? I thought you, I thought you wanted yourself in the photo.
Hang on, we got one more, we got a parent one.
Okay, thanks.
Congratulations. All right, and we have Scott Baker here, principal at Henry James Middle School, to present his two students.
So we have two students to present. Our process at Henry James, the way we go through this award, is one of our most prestigious ones. At each eighth grade team, nominates two students. And then we have a Google form that goes out to every teacher. Every teacher has to look at them, like, how, why they were nominated, vote on scale, it's pretty official. So you can't get away with just being a great math student, or someone who's wonderful in the play, because you also have a talent in calculus, and the upstanding in evidence in the science. So really, all around, two of our most outstanding students at Henry James. I think it's probably best if I read where the teachers nominated. But I did want to tell a little story between classes at Henry James. If you've ever been there, you'll hear like students' names being called at passing time. And usually, it's not for to come see the principal, but the kids always think that. You need to come see the principal, usually. But so here they are, so these two came in, and I think they genuinely thought they were in trouble. Which goes to speak to their humility. I mean, they go about doing their, the business of being an outstanding student at Henry James every day. There's a lot of criteria, but I think concern for others is the one that rings most true for both of them. So I'll read quickly the nominations from their teachers. We'll start with Anna. So Anna, we'd like to nominate Anna Waters for the Cabe Award. As I've gotten to know her over the past year and a half, I've seen her be committed member of the community. As a cast member of musical, she's conscientious, not over committing herself. Her concern for others is notable and unadorned. Anna consistently sees where, when she hears a struggle, and goes out of her way without hesitation to help. She does this effortlessly. I witness her show concern for those who are often overlooked as well. She is a daily exemplar of Henry James. So congratulations to Anna Waters. Do you want to time?
Yes. So everybody gets their picture.
Congratulations.
Next up, we have Nick Bavigian. I always say the name wrong on a Friday, but we have some. Nick is an exemplary candidate for the Cabe Leadership Award, due to his outstanding traits that make him a remarkable leader. He embodies the reward values, and is a role model student in classroom. His upbeat, positive attitude uplifts the mood of those around him, and he can be a great friend to all. He consistently demonstrates strong, warm character, and his kindness, thought, and patience toward others. Makes great sense of humor adds an extra layer of joy to the learning environment. And his mature thinking enables him to navigate complex situations with ease. Overall, makes exceptional leadership skills, standing in genuine care for others, adherence to law, and is unravaged and positive in communication, and outstanding in everything. Congratulations.
I'm sure I'm giving you a very good experience.
I don't, but that's okay. Thank you.
We are missing, as I said, two of our scholar athletes. Steve, do you want to mention who they are?
We had a great reception a couple of weeks ago with the Parks and the Willisons, and about 2,000 of our other friends. But Reese Willison, it was our nomination on the girl's side. Reese is a soccer, basketball, lacrosse player, which she is right now. And just along the line, this is our second Willison to win that award. So very impressive. And Gabe Park is our soccer track, indoor track, outdoor track. And again, just great families, great kids, who have really exemplified exactly what scholar athletes are supposed to do, and the way they work, and are recognized, both of them captains of their teams. Reese is off to Williams to try to play two sports. And Gabe is off to Tufts, so very impressive.
That's amazing. I just want to give you an opportunity, Reed Bogart, who is not here, did you want to say a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely, Reed, I was just watching him, and I think, because he made a save, I turned around and said, "I gotta go give him a word, I gotta go." Reed, just a great pick. Reed is actually off Coast Guard. Emily's actually off to University of New Hampshire, I forgot to mention that. And Reed, hockey and lacrosse, and captain, and best buddies, and also unified, and other items that he gives back to the school. Just a wonderful example of a student athlete as well. So we're just, couldn't be happier with all four nominations here today.
That's great, well, thank you, and it just shows what great work these kids do, and applause to all of them. Next.
Yes. So, Mr. Patrina, it is nice to have you here doing what you do best, which is talking about kids. Now, one of your least favorite things is we get to celebrate some of your own accomplishments. So, members of the board, and I'm sure some in the crowd know that Steve is retiring after 38 years of service to Simsberry High School. An amazing, amazing run. We have a chance to celebrate Steve's career this Thursday, I'm looking forward to that. And had a chance to talk about Steve's accomplishments at staff recognition. But I said it once, and I'll say it before, you know, Steve practices what he preaches. He talks a lot about pride and passion in Simsberry High School, and nobody has represented Simsberry High School better over time than Steve Patrina. He's impacted not only myself, but so many kids and adults in so many different ways, in his capacity as a coach, department supervisor, a longtime assistant principal. And as I said before, Steve, so fitting that you captained the ship for four years here in what's been a challenging time, leading us out of COVID, bringing us back, and have done so in kind of an unwavering spirit. And I've appreciated it greatly. And we are here to honor Steve this evening with the Simsberry Chamber of Commerce Educator of the Year Award. And we have Nancy Sheets, I believe, here too.
Hi, everybody, thank you for inviting me.
Nice to see you.
For those of you that I do not know, I'm Nancy Sheets, longtime resident of Simsberry. I wish I could say Simsberry Trojan, but my husband was, not me. So I'm a come over, but we did have the opportunity to raise two girls in the Simsberry school system. Both of them graduated from Simsberry High School. They were great athletes of their day, they were coaches and captains of teams, and yet none of them ever shared with me that there was such a thing as the Trojan, what's it called, Trojan conduct. Something to the effect of, let's see, if we are honorable, respectful, and responsible, it allows us to do our best today. But better, it poises us to develop character attributes and habits of mind that ensure success well into the future. And I don't think there's anybody, after 40 years of service, that exemplifies that better than here. So Steve and Patrina, it's really an honor to present you, on behalf of the Board of Education and the Chamber of Commerce, with the 2023 Simsberry Educator of the Year Award.
Now, Steve, Mike was giving me a little fun fact before, and I don't know if he's off on this or not, but you were named principal here. Were you named assistant principal here too?
I was named assistant principal here, principal here, and now this.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you, Squadron Line. I just, I just thank you for everybody and the support, and it truly takes a village to do things that we do. And one person does not create the wave, and it's everyone that believes in it and moves it. And I can't say enough about our Chamber of Commerce, and we've asked a lot of these people in terms of donations to sports, and hiring our kids, and doing everything but with Capstone. We're going to a whole other level of engagement. And we just can't, they're always there for us, they are always cooperative. And the support of the community is truly part of your organization. So thank you, and thank you, everybody.
You got it, Steve, thank you.
Because I could give her some praise.
Who'd you bring with you, Steve?
I'll take two more seconds. As Matt knows, and everyone up here knows, when you give so much of your time, it's the backbone is what's behind, that takes care of the day-to-day business and keeps things moving. And I said, when I retired, I said the best thing, we're will be unbound from the school calendar for the first time in 38 years. So actually, you want to go on a trip in October? 38 years is a potential, but I can't say enough about my wife and my kids, who live and breathe in blue and gold as well, so thank you.
There you go, this was a really nice way to start, so thank you all. With that, you can all take your leave, unless you want to stay for public body.
Thank you.
Should I set my stop, watch how quickly it clears out.
I might touch that tour.
Careful of the wires.
You want to borrow a hard hat?
Walk down in the summer.
Thank you all for coming, congratulations to everybody, well deserved.
Yeah.
Congratulations, everybody.
Thank you all.
Nice hat.
Very nice. Thank you.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Apparently, I didn't advertise my presentation.
All right, with that, community reports and communications, Grace.
So, again, with the school year coming to a close, there are a lot of events coming up. So Thursday is Capstone Day, which is a really big event for most seniors and some juniors, as they get to present their projects that they've been working on pretty much for the entirety of the school year. So how this works is that there will be a modified schedule on Thursday, and presentations will be taking place from around 7:30 to 10:30. And all students at the high school are able to sign up for what presentations they'd like to go to based on topic. So if it's art-related, computer science-related, math-related, so everyone will be going to different presentations throughout the day. The next thing going on is tomorrow is our annual disconnect-to-reconnect day. So this just promotes a technology free day, and in return for students giving up their cellphones for the day to get a free slushie from the school store. Hopefully, this works, it's kind of 50/50 sometimes. We'll see.
So does that mean no technology in your classrooms as well?
Yeah, we tried to just stay away from all sorts of technology, so we'll see how that goes. And then the art show will also be taking place in lobby, in the lobby in Blue Gym from tomorrow through Friday. And this is just a great event to recognize some of the super talented art students at the schools.
Yeah, if you haven't gone, highly recommend it.
It's open to the public?
Yes, it is, open to the public, not during school, or is it not during?
At least after 2:15.
After school, yes.
Thank you. Ryan? Okay. Jen?
I just wanted to touch base, although I might be stealing Ms. Lomke's thunder. But today, I went to the World Language Award Ceremony, and it was amazing to see how many students were there, and how they read some poetry in other languages. It was, it was pretty cool to see, so I just wanted to give a shout out to all of them.
That's great, glad you could go. Liz?
I wish I had a more exciting day than what I had. For a language, but anyway, as you know, we're down to the wire, we've got just a few more weeks to go, but today was a pretty busy day at the Capitol, and so a few things that were happening today, and some of the bills that were being debated, besides the bill 5003, which we are, which you all know about, that I've talked about over and over and over and over. And it's, it's looking good. The only thing that is really going to hold things up is the governor. He's really holding his purse strings tight on this for some aspects that are in that. So we're a little concerned about that, because we really aren't going to know until the final end. But, but in that, in that respect, you know, that speeds up that tenure ECS and legislators, board members, superintendents, just about everybody in the state, everybody who's education, has really just, you know, implored the governor, you've got to let this go. You know, you've got to release those reins of that, because this is going to be such a monumental change for education, public education across, across the state, and not only for us, but magnet schools, ECS funding, and everywhere. So that was a big thing going on. The other things that were happening today that were going on, because Sheila was there, and we sort of had a live feed of going on, and she was in between a lot of sessions, but there was another, a lot of debate on teacher evaluation, a lot of debate on the teacher advisory committee, and allowing parents to serve on these committees, a lot of debate on removing boards of education from termination processes around the state. And then a lot of debate about teachers promoting language in certain, in certain areas of some of these bills. So there was a lot going on, they're meeting every day, so they've got to get done within the next few weeks. One of the other big, big pieces that came through, which most likely will pass, is moving up the start date for kindergarten from December 31st to September 1st deadline. There's been a lot of talk about it, most likely it will pass. If it does pass, it will go in effect in, on July 2024. So they have heard, you know, a lot of testimony.
So next July.
Next July, so it will be next July. Most likely, it will, will pass, because there's been just a lot of, a lot of talk about it on both sides. The big issue with that is that there's a lot of concern, is because we do not have any universal pre-K within the state. And moving students up to September 1st versus December 31st, we've got students around the state who have come into schools with no pre-K, no pre-K experience whatsoever. So that's another piece of that, of that puzzle, that they need to really think about and talk about and work with. A lot of boards around the state are very concerned about that, especially in a lot of the urban areas, with these kids coming in with a pre-K advantage. And the other thing is, is we have no universal K, obviously, either, because K is not law in Connecticut. So these were some things today, as we were getting live feed of what was going on, that they need to really think about this, talk about this, and have a structure in place, you know, before they put this into law for next July, because what we're concerned about is all the angst back home in the districts. You know, if it's not communicated well, and there's no structure in place, then, you know, parents are going to be backs against the wall, thinking, now what, you know, where do I go? I have one year, and how a year ago, and here goes by very quickly. So these are just some of the things that have been happening. They are tackling these things as we speak, you know, day by day, because they really do want to fulfill all this by the end of the session, so we'll see what happens by then. And the other one that we had, actually, was, was actually a nicer celebration, was we had the crack 2023 Annual Meeting Celebration, and Board Celebration Annual Meeting last week. So it was great, we had members, superintendents, board members, special guests that came. We award our celebration to our students, also to our students that are overcoming adversity, and also scholarships, and also we have a teacher program, you know, for incoming teachers. And we honored them, many of them are, this is our fifth year cohort of our teachers that have gone through this program. So it was, it was very, very good, and I will be sending on to all of you the year review. It's about 20 slides, I'll narrow it down to the most important slides, and I think you all should, should see. I'll send to Matt, and he can go through these slides and talk about this, but it's about what has been going on in the past year, you know, with crack, and I think it's important that all board members see, you know, what is, what is happening within, not just crack, but all the rest, the good things that are going on in the state. So that's where we are.
Thank you, that was great. Jeff?
Hey, just wanted to quickly give a shout out to Liz Able, and I was at the Snaps concert last week. And if you guys haven't seen it and gone, you really, I really highly encourage you to go. With, with the, what she does with the band, and the ensembles, and the jazz band, it is, it is really remarkable. You know, we talk a lot about the offerings we have at high school level. I just, I just can't say enough about our arts program and what we're doing there. And, you know, no wonder she was teacher of the year at the state level. You know, what she does is just fantastic, so just a great job, and again, highly encourage everybody to get to go.
Terrific, thank you. Tara?
I'm all good, thank you.
So a couple of things, the Kathleen McGowan Educational Enhancement Group has met together twice, first to decide who among our graduating seniors will receive scholarships, and who will be going into the education field. So we can't reveal those names yet, because they don't know who they are until awards night, which is June 3rd. So the second part of that is that we also met to review teacher innovation grants as another component that this fund supports, the legacy of Ms. McGowan. So we had an extraordinary amount of grants, more than I believe that we've ever had. So that was extremely exciting. So certainly more to come on that. Grace beautifully summed up our Capstone 263 students presenting. So they are ready to go, as is our staff and our community members, and we just thank them for their support and their mentorship. And then Jeff, you had mentioned the Snaps. We also have our Choral Review happening at the high school tomorrow night, 7:00 PM. It is music through the decades, so please join us if you are able to do so. That's it.
Mr. Solomon?
Our, as our principal retires, I can tell you that our Simsberry High School principal search process has been in full gear, including a well-attended, over 20 parents at a focus group to talk about traits for the new principal, and what the work of the school was. So it's pleased to do that part of it last week. And if we stay on schedule with the remaining part of the process, the public could expect an announcement of a new Simsberry school principal on June 1st. So that's sort of the timeline we're on, and hopefully, we, we stay on that. I'm also in the process now of turning to some of our other district-level positions that need to be filled. And we're signing teachers just about every day now, including a major threshold today, that once or twice a year, it's a Simsberry grad who is signing. And so I do my final interview, and I prep them to say, okay, we're going across the hall now to talk to the superintendent. And because this was a Simsberry guy, I said, "Do you know Mr. Curtis?" And she told me, of course she did, he was her principal at Squadron Line. So we have our first new signee who had a principal. Very big threshold moment today, that was a lot of fun for us. And we'll keep signing them right through the next several weeks. We've got a number of positions still to fill, and we're finding great people so far.
That's great, that's great. Mr. Curtis?
Yes, I am all set. Very busy time of the year, but a fun time of the year as well, with all the celebrations.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, my favorite time of the year. And I'm excited, I have signed up for four Capstone presentations on Thursday. So it was hard to pick, that was a really good list, and really interesting, so I'm very excited. Very excited, all right. With that, we are on to approval of minutes of the May 9 meeting. Can I please get a motion? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 9 meeting.
Second.
And any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Personnel?
Just one item for tonight, it's a resignation of Will Wesley, who's been a special education teacher with us for five years, first at Squadron Line, and then at Simsberry High School. Will had an opportunity to return to an elementary opportunity in a local district, and he tendered his resignation effective June 30th, so the motion is there for whoever wants to take that.
Can I get someone to make that motion, please?
So moved?
I need, can you make the motion, too?
Moved, that the Board of Education accept the resignation of William Wesley effective June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Approval of unaffiliated salary adjustments.
Okay, so the unaffiliated group is a group of employees, somewhere between 40 and 50 people who fall in this group. They are not part of a bargaining group, so it's many of the people who work at central office. It's things like our technicians for our computers, our occupational therapists, and physical therapists fall within this group. If you're not part of one of the other natural bargaining units, you kind of get put in this group. And they don't bargain at the negotiating table with us. It's a meeting where Matt and I meet with the Personnel and Negotiations Committee to talk about fair compensation in the context of what other groups have gotten for this group. So we had that meeting a couple of weeks ago, and are bringing a motion for you tonight. First, I'll, the wages, the recommendation is for this year that it would be a 3% general wage increase for the members of this group, which is sort of between where some of our bargaining groups were and others. So we think it's a very fair settlement for where the economics are right now. Few other items that people who have been part of our negotiations will recognize that this medical management piece that helps defray the increases in insurance costs through making sure that there's pre-certification for certain procedures, where doctors have to talk to the insurance company before they improve it. That's going to be part of this agreement for the unaffiliated group. There will be a little bit of a bump, keeping up with economics, on the maximum benefit for dental for the year. The, similar to the teachers, we went from 1,500 to 2,000, which is more typical number annually now. And then just to clean up around some illness day language to reflect what is in our other contracts. So the important part of the motion is to get the wage increase on the record. So I believe a motion was placed in your folders, and someone, if someone could take that.
I have it. I'll move that the salary, salary range for the unaffiliated Board of Education employees and salaries and salaries for the central office administrators be increased by 3% for the 2023, 24 fiscal year.
Can I get a second on that, please?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Approval of textbooks?
That's over to me. So at our last board meeting, I had shared with you two texts. They are included in your exhibit this evening, one at the high school level and one which is a text that both ELA and social studies use for a combined unit relative to the triangle shirtwaist fire of 1911. So both of these texts have gone before our curriculum committee and I'm doing some technical cleanup. So that is what these two texts represent.
Could somebody make a motion for me, please?
Move that the Board approve the textbook adoption for the 2023, 24 school year as submitted by the administration.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And now we are on to information and reports.
All right, Mr. Liz Eddie, we had the wonderful tour, brought it to life for us. And you're going to talk to us a little bit about the phasing plan.
Absolutely.
Great.
So just to bring everybody kind of up to date of what's been happening lately. When we were together last year, I was, I started by looking at, at that and realized the amazing distance that we have come since we sat here a year, a year and a day ago. We have bi-weekly OAC meetings, which is, what's the O?
Owner, architect, construction.
Oh, my goodness. Wow. Architect, construction and owners meetings. We have those bi-weekly. We meet up at the trailer at the top of the hill. That would be Neil, Jason Casey, myself, the team from Techton, the team from ONG and the team from Arcadis. We meet every other week just to kind of check in on the, the status of things, to make sure that project's moving forward, to deal with things like rock that we didn't know was there, tree stumps that were buried under parking lots, shifts in, hey, we want to, we want to tweak this wall, we want to change those doors. So it's, can, can range from simple mundane things to big enormous things. We've had meetings to discuss the keying of the building, the FFNE, which is the furnitures, fixtures and equipment. And that's, that and the technology budget, those meetings are ongoing as we figure out exactly what the, the interior of the building will be, for lack of a better term, decorated as. That's, those meetings are basically, I've heard it described as if you picked the building, tipped it upside down, everything that fell out, that gets dealt with at one of those two meetings. And I'm going to show you a glimpse of what a classroom will, we believe it will look like. The public buildings many meetings continue, staff and student tours. There's a live link in here that I will push out. It basically is the tour that all of you took this evening, but I wanted to make sure that those who were unable to attend could get a glimpse of that. And I will push that out tomorrow to the Latimerling community as well. I shot it last Thursday and when I came back Friday at lunch, different walls had already been knocked down and put up. So it's already, it is already out of date. But it, we have started to, I've started to meet staff here on Saturdays and Sundays so that they can put hard hats on and walk through the building. Students, student classrooms are getting tours. We hug the inside of the fence and we kind of walk around the building so that they can see what's taking place. And then we're going to, those who complete their summer reading and math programs are going to get their names in a hat to raffle off for a hard hat behind the scenes tour on the weekend for them and their, and a couple of friends. So trying to, trying to promote some of that. And a whole lot of construction has been taking place. 22,000 square feet of new space has been poured since the first tree was cut down on December 3rd, which was not that long ago. Installation of steel structures, roof decking, interior and exterior walls. As you saw when you walked through, all of the steel studs are up and the kitchen will start to look like a kitchen very, very soon. The reason all of that white material is wrapping those spaces is to keep the moisture out so that they can start putting sheet rock up. And then the parking lot that we gave to the construction company on April break, when I came back from being away for nine days, was a 10-foot deep hole and they had built the entire structure inside of it. And it has been filled and they have started to install all of the curbing and they will be pouring that back parking lot in the weeks ahead. They have run all, just today alone, they ran all of the data and electric lines up to the building. And those will get hooked up very soon. And then obviously all of the areas, areas that were approved in the second referendum, all those additional exterior seating areas and classroom spaces outside are pushing up, up ahead. So there's two, two, two snapshots here. And, and the subsequent one is, this was the very first day, this was when we were supposed to do our groundbreaking, the day after we were supposed to do our groundbreaking that never occurred because of the snow. So we brought the students who were supposed to be a part of that out there. We took a picture and we are standing right about where that second beam on the right is when we took that picture. Obviously it looks slightly different than it did then. There's about 14, or, sorry, about 10,000 square feet of classroom space that's now on this side of the building that was not there. And then the view from this back door, the day that they knocked down the garage versus what it is now is substantially, substantially different, highlighted by the tall roof that is the new gymnasium. It's just, it's really exciting how many of our classrooms have been able to get a view of this. And even if the classroom itself doesn't have, like the, our building, our, our classrooms along the front don't necessarily get to see it on a day-to-day basis. But when they're up in the music room every day, they have the, the most unbelievable view straight down that long corridor that is the new classrooms. And every kid has gotten to see cool aspects of, of the building coming together. The day-to-day, it's loud sometimes, but it's really not that bad. And we have the most responsive construction team. I cannot thank the team at, at ONG. And enough for, like, they, you know, we met when we got ready to do our smarter balance testing. We gave them the schedule. They have done a great job of basically ceasing to work in areas of the building that are adjacent to where our kids are testing. We didn't, we never worried about the third grade classes out front because they face the front, they're far enough away from it. And then the stars aligned the other day, third grade started to Espa, to Espa, and they started to rip up the front sidewalk. The third grade classroom, I got a text from Heather O'Connor. I sent a text to Scott Macy, who you met outside, and within four minutes of the time that Heather texted me, the entire construction on the front of the site had ceased. And they turned, they shut down the dump truck, they all popped out of their stuff, they headed to the back and they started working on the studs. And 60 minutes later, they all went back out, they got in the dump truck and they started ripping it up again. So they have really been a great partner in this. Scott's text, when I'm like, I'm so sorry to do this, his response was, wasn't a yes, wasn't an no, it was just, this is a school first project. That was it. That was the text. So I'm truly appreciative for them. We, we have done concerts in this cafeteria with parents sitting in cafeteria table chairs. And they have been great. It was nice to have them share some of that flexibility with us. We've done concerts at Henry James. Thank you to them for hosting us. We have done gym outside for the last 164 days, minus a couple of days when it rained super, super hard. We have a, again, thank you to Henry James for giving us their old COVID tent that is now the outdoor gymnasium on the days that it is drizzling. And just flexibility and professionalism at every single turn. Our staff have been amazing. They have been flexible in moving classroom spaces from the music room the other day because they were welding and they were dropping steel beams over there and they just wanted to make sure, they weren't really worried about hitting the building, but they just wanted to make sure that, they just didn't want it to be a distraction for the kids. So we moved them while they were doing that aspect. We moved the class for 45 minutes and then they popped back in. And our, that's just kind of the way the building is functioning right now, is just eternally flexible. And some awesome interactions between the community and our workers. And so these pictures had to be shared. Rayland does tours with me every week or so and we walk the site together. And Scott Macy became aware that Rayland and I were walking and he invited Rayland up to the trailer where he explained to Rayland kind of what the, the week ahead boards and there's six consecutive weeks. And the first thing that ran the notice was that the, the smarter balance testing dates were on that. And so he was asking some questions. Scott walked him, took the time to walk him through that. On the way back down, we got stopped by the Masons because the roofer had the audacity to say the roofers were the coolest guys ever and they had the best job. So the Masons brought him over, started showing him how to put bricks together. These interactions go on non-stop. The kids yelling out the window from the nurse's office today to the construction guys was amazing. Any classroom that butts up against the active construction zone, you will see signs. Kids started putting signs and once one class started doing it, they all started doing it. And it's been a really fun way for our kids to engage with our construction workers. And the constructions workers, they come over, they knock on the windows, they wave, they talk with the kids. They've shared with kind of what they're working on when the kids yell questions out to them. It's really been an awesome, an awesome experience. A big piece of it lately, work, the, the work recently has been the FFNE discussions of what, you know, what does all of the new furniture and fixtures look like? This is a sample kind of of what goes into the new kindergarten classrooms. It's everything from new tables and chairs and rugs and desks, bookcases, filing cabinets, and then obviously all of the, the built-in aspects of the room. What we've done is we've started to narrow down the focus of exactly what pieces would go into the kindergarten rooms as, oh, where is my other? It's not there. There was a first grade sample room, too. What, what the desks look like, what the colors will be, where the furniture will be, will be placed. Obviously there's a lot of flexibility, knowing that there's no more built-in bookcases into the wall. We opted for modular units so that we would have the flexibility to change the flow of the room as we see, as we saw fit. As you saw when we were up in the old third grade section, the front, the teaching wall of that building, of the, of the room is always the door that's close, at the side, it's always closest to the door because it does maximize the flow of the room. But knowing that we've got new furniture coming into these space, knowing that we've got furniture that's sized appropriately for the, the students that are in there is really exciting.
Is that, sorry, Mike, is that a cubby room?
So often, so there are, in between the two sets of kindergarten rooms that we will have is a shared toilet room and a, and a cubby room. The cubby room is just for that one classroom. And so this is, basically this is a snapshot and I chopped it in half. So there will be a second side of this. There would be cubby rooms on the other side, a passageway that goes through to the two bathrooms. Very similar to the kindergarten room that we have now, but with a, a cubby room that is out of the, out of the way.
Out of the classroom.
And again, the, so there'll be two sets of kindergartens. Obviously when this building was built 61 years ago, it was built with two kindergarten rooms because half the kindergarten meant you could have four sections. Along the front of the building, three of those classrooms will become two kindergarten rooms plus that middle space in the middle.
Great.
So some, so some of these pieces have been shared with staff, the, the types of furniture, the color schemes, things like that. And then recently we, as a way to continue to involve our students, we had our students all vote on the color schemes for what the new playscape would be. Without even realizing it, they chose a color scheme that actually matches the color scheme that will be throughout the building. It's, it's sort of these blues and greens and purples as you go through, very warm and friendly. And the students narrowed in, this is one of the three playgrounds that will be up. This is the one that will be up on the fifth and sixth grade side of the building over to that side to the north. There will also be an additional playground to the, the south side for the primary wing. And then part of the project is a standalone, smaller kindergarten playground that is fenced in. So it's, it's really exciting stuff as we're starting to pick out some of those finishings and furnishings for the building. And it's starting to, to take shape more than just a big giant steel and concrete structure. So where we are right now is here, the fun stuff, the phasing plans within the building. And again, the, the, the teachers have been wonderfully flexible in repurposing areas of the building in order to meet the needs that we have. When we started this project, the initial phasing plan, I believe, Neil, am I right? It was like eight or nine or 10 phases of like two classrooms at a shot and everybody shuffling three doors to the left and, which would have taken about 12 years to get through the project because they can't, they need to run all of the, all of the piping at one time for the entire upper, upper hallway. So this is the, this is the phase that we are in right now. Originally, we were hoping this would have been a summer start. It wound up being a December start, which is great because it still gives us some clean breaks around summertime and around winter. The only piece that we had to give up in this phase, for lack of a better term, are the three, the three classrooms that you saw today, the old third grade wing. Otherwise, the entire first phase, or the entire phase one is all new construction. It's 22,000 square feet of gyms, stage, cafeteria, classrooms, offices, bathrooms, things like that. At the, the initial plan was the end of December that they would be completed with this. I'm thrilled to share that they're projecting they'll probably have it done a couple of weeks in advance of that. The fact that it didn't snow at all last winter was wonderfully helpful. But the fact that Scott and his team are really pushing ahead and they're, they're doing some amazing work and working quickly. They're several days ahead of schedule and they're, they're bordering on being a couple of weeks ahead of schedule. One of the things that they're planning to do this summer to put themselves in a really good position for when the next phase starts is Silk Town is looking to replace the entire roof on the upper section of the building. And then they would basically disappear for the next 12 months until we came down to the, the lower section. It's a piece that they're 100% confident that they can do without disruption. Another piece that they're going to do is they're going to take down the drop ceiling from the upper hallway and run all of the piping and the electrical and the data lines so that when they take possession of that phase, they're that much further ahead. So they're really thinking about efficiencies and ways that they can, you know, be ready for that next phase to start and not have to duplicate some of that work. So at the end of, let's call it December, just to make it nice and clean, phase one ends and phase two begins. So that means we get all of those, all of those pieces that are currently red. And what we give up for the next phase is really the central core of the building. So that is the hallway that we are in right now, including the gym, the current gym, the current calf, the art rooms, the music rooms, and then fourth, fifth and sixth grade. So it's really everything beyond that lobby, up this hall and around the corner. So what we, what we'll do at that point, over the span of a couple of days, is days and nights and weekends, we will start to move a couple of classrooms, a couple of classrooms at a time, figuring probably two to three at a night. We will move into some of those newly completed spaces, which is great because you'll get something new and shiny. It's definitely, it, it will create some stress at that point. I think my team is working really well to make sure that we are mitigating stress at every level that we possibly can. And also continuing to keep our eye on the prize, which is, at the end of this, we are going to have a building that is literally the envy of the state of Connecticut. My conversations with Techton and, and ONG have been, hey, when this is done, do you mind if we bring other towns to come look at this building? Because they feel amazing about, about the school that we are building here. So that, with that comes, again, the, the growing pains of finding a way, if you are in that fourth grade classroom and you've got to work your way all the way around to the gymnasium, those are pieces that we have to do, though. Those are pieces that we have to do. And again, my teachers and my team have been wonderfully flexible with it, knowing that there are, is going to be that disruption. This is a quick phase. This is a six-month phase. Because this, all they are doing is renovating spaces. They will come in and with, and within days, they will have taken down the ceiling, the electrical, the flooring, it all comes out. It gets gutted down to the slab floor, the concrete walls and the steel roof. At that point, they will start, they will go back in. They will outfit those rooms exactly the way you saw them outfitting the rooms upstairs there with the steel framing to make sure that all the electrical and all the data is hidden. All of the, the heating and cooling systems go up into the roof, the new windows go in, the new doors go in, the new locks go in, the new cameras go in. Literally every single thing in the building is new. And then that gets us to summer of '24. So that's a quick six months. And the final six months, we pick up that, that, all of that area as well. And included in that second phase is this space and that space, which becomes the new library media center and the art room. So that does eat up a whole lot of the square footage, which is great because that's a huge piece that we'll be able to give back to our kids in that third phase. And in that third phase, it's everything along the primary wing. It's what's currently the K through three section. It's also the main office. That's where we've talked about capitalizing on some of that space that's down here where that wall closes within the cafeteria and using part of that cafeteria to, to relocate the office so that we, we don't have to disrupt the functions of the cafeteria. Again, it does create some interesting traffic flow pieces for students walking, but we will have the main corridor open at that point. Keeping in mind that nothing, and nothing from next summer on should interrupt our flow of traffic for drop-off and buses, which is a really wonderful piece that they will have completed. When we took our students for our, our tour over the last couple of weeks, their first question, well, their first question is always, what are the big giant yellow things, which is the underwater detention system? The second question is always, so what's going to be done when we get back? They're not super impressed when I tell them the parking lot. The teachers are pretty psyched about that. The kids are less impressed. But the goal is to have the bulk of the playground work done when students come back. And that's all dependent on how, how much of that equipment is readily available and how quickly they can turn it around. At worst, it's going to be a couple of weeks into the year and those playgrounds will be done. That's a piece that feels very real for kids because that's a piece that they get to engage with each and every day. Knowing that in December, they're going to have access to the gymnasium again, is a huge piece. And my conversation with my music department next week, when we schedule our concerts, is we're scheduling concerts for January because we're going to have Scott concerts in our, in our gymnasium. And that's a really cool thing for us to be able to do. Again, it's, it's starting to feel very, very real for people in the school community as they see it going up. The patience I've already put, put out there for them in advance is when you come back from summer vacation and the walls on the outside are up and it looks like it's done and you realize it's still not close to being done, that there's a lot of work that remains. But I am, I am thrilled with, with where we are to date. I'm thrilled with the fact that this, again, December 3rd is when they started cutting down trees. And here we are, six months later, and we have 22,000 square, square feet of building that is almost ready for us to take, to take on. But in the meantime, the teaching and the learning is pushing forward. Our, you know, we have teachers who are involved in committees all over town, looking at new math programs, teachers who are looking at the science of reading. teachers who are looking at the science of reading, teachers who are engaged in committees, in the McGowan Grant committees. We have teachers who are, on the SEL committees, we have teachers who are continuing to do the same exact things that they would be doing regardless of the disruption within the building. Daily intervention supports and special education supports are taking place. Yep, we don't have a gym, and that's really hard, and I feel for Tracy and Brandon through this process. They have been great through the process and flexible through it, as we turned that into a temporary book house and a place for, place for all of our interventions to occur. It is a room that buzzes every single day, because we are continuing to do all of the work that we would do, whether we had an extra twenty-two thousand square feet or not. Weekly PLCs keep taking place. Data-driven decisions are being made. Community events are taking place. We're going to do an outdoor concert on June first, because two years ago, we talked about it, and you know what? We're going to make it happen. We're going to do it out on the primary playground. We're going to bring the bleachers out. We rolled the piano out for rehearsal today. People are going to bring their chairs, and we're going to do an outdoor concert. We're going to do an outdoor sixth grade ceremony at the end of the year up on the top of the hill. And we're just, we are continuing to come together. Thank you, Henry James, for hosting four hundred and fifty people for our bingo night. It's really been an outstanding year, and while, you know, while the physical layout continues to change and change and change, the teaching and the learning and the work that this family, this school family is engaged in has not wavered at a single moment. So I could not be more proud to be leading this team.
That's great.
I just want to thank you, Mike, because the level of attention to detail, as you know, that has to go into managing this, and Neil as well, who comes to the weekly construction meetings, having gone through experience similar in another district myself. I mean, it takes up a lot of time, a lot of effort and energy and communication when you still have to run the teaching and learning in the school and keeping things going. So great tour today, and excellent snapshot here. So thank you.
Yeah, no, really exciting to see it all coming together, because it's been on paper for so long, so long. So.
It's been a while.
Can I ask a question? You hit on this earlier, but I think it's worth mentioning again, since, you know, almost on a daily basis, we are all asked about efficiencies and costs, whether it's with the budget or this process or what have you. You mentioned that we're probably about a couple of weeks ahead of schedule now, and hopefully that would translate into dollars and cents. But do I have that accurate? I just want to make sure.
So the dollars and cents aspect, I don't, that I don't know. You know, I know that the fixed costs are the fixed costs that they are. So I don't know if there's any efficiencies that are gained in that. I'm talking more the efficiencies within the disruption to the building and the timeline associated with it.
I just have one question. When you talk about how the existing classrooms are being renovated.
Yep.
Are they going to just kind of do all the work, all the walls, all the windows? Like, is it going to go down the row? Or are you going to be able to reclaim those classrooms one by one?
Fantastic question. So one of the reasons that, one of the pushbacks that we got of the, we could do a couple of rooms and a couple of rooms and a couple of rooms, is it added substantial time to just do a couple of rooms at a time. So what they'll do is they'll come down, they'll rip all the ceilings out, they'll rip all the plumbing out, they'll rip everything out. They've got to dig a trench from one end of the outer upper hallway all the way down to the other end, to the center. So they'll do all the plumbing in one shot. While that's going on, they'll start putting up all of the metal framing. But for them to do it piece by piece by piece, my understanding was that it is substantial length of time.
It makes sense, but I just wanted to.
No, it's a great question.
Now, the original timeline was from when they started to when they ended. They started in that conceptual phase of saying eighteen to twenty-four months.
Right.
And by doing this in just the three phases, you're at eighteen months instead of the twenty-four. Like, if we had chunked it out a little more, you would have been closer to the twenty-four months.
Right. Like, I think about it even with your own house. When everything's open, just do all the big stuff.
Yeah, you do it all at once.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right.
Happy to give tours, anytime, by the way.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can wear a hard hat, maybe.
The hard hats are always here.
Policy second reading.
Yeah, so we presented a number of policies two weeks ago at the last meeting, and asked for anybody who had comments or questions to get back to me. We did have one board member who sent me a clarification, where I answered that board member and copied Jim Bachelor as the chair of policy. So on policy fifty-one forty-five point fifty-three, our old policy was titled transgender and gender non-conforming youth. And the new policy sort of does away with that term, non-conforming youth, and uses the term gender minority youth. So the language throughout the policy draft we gave you uses the better phrase now of gender minority, as opposed to gender non-conforming. So there's just an inconsistency between the title and the text of the policy. So we're changing the title of the policy. So in a page that you got in your folders, it should now read as the title as transgender and gender minority youth. And then the rest of the policy is consistent.
Now, we're going into second reading. We still have time to send you questions and things.
You do have yet two more weeks, or three weeks before our next meeting. You got three weeks.
Three weeks.
And then we would vote on these policies on the June thirteenth meeting. Yes.
So Neil, you just said that it says gender minority youth, and it says gender minority students.
Gender, gender minority, yeah. I mean, so it used to say gender non-conforming youth.
So students is?
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So that brings us to our second public audience. Given that we're the only ones here, I would say there is none. And we would need a motion to move into executive session. But for the purposes here, I just would like to make mention that our next regular meeting of the Board of Ed is Tuesday, June thirteenth. We will have a special meeting on Wednesday, May thirty-first, at the Board of Ed in our conference room. And graduation is Monday, the twelfth. If you look in your folder and you said you were coming, you should have the parking pass. So there is that. With that, I would take a motion for executive session, please.
Sure.
Okay. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all very much.